Do we have Commissioner Gibbon on the phone? Yes, all right.
Join me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We have a nice cloudy day ahead of us, but we have an agenda that should not take too long. With one removal of item six under regular business, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Commissioner?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, concerns, questions from the audience? Sherri, call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes. Consent to agenda items, I will ask for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions, concerns concerning those? Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes. Takes us to a tabled item on a medical cannabis license two-two-zero-three-dash-one-zero. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. This is time and place for a hearing on the Shingra law medical license. They got a medical license over a year ago, and they were supposed to go ahead and pay the second half of their payment for that of the $50,000 on March 1st of this year. They were contacted informed they had not paid at that point in time. Our office has sent letters on May 1st and as well on April 21st. We've had several telephone conversations with them about this. I believe the auditor's office has had telephone conversations with them at this time. And so, we're bringing it in front of the board to revoke their license for failure to pay. And that is the request. And so, this is actually technically an administrative hearing, so they have a right to appear. They have a right to present witnesses or make arguments on their behalf. It would be incumbent upon the county to show that they didn't pay for their license at this point in time. And so, the board is actually sitting in a quasi judicial role at this time. So, I don't know if they're present at this time.
Is anybody here representing this medical cannabis license? Anybody on the phone by chance? All right, time and place for them to give their evidence and your evidence for they have not paid can be entered into their record.
I would just like to make my record, I would ask for the auditor to just verify that they haven't received any payment at this point.
Payment has not been received.
All right, very good. With that, is there a motion either to uphold or rescind their license?
I'll make a motion to rescind the license.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very good, we have a motion, a second to rescind their license for twenty-two-zero-three-dash-one-zero. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this hearing? Hearing none. Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes. Takes us to number two. Terminate an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, what we have here is this is for structure forty-two-zero-twenty-dash-two-oh-one. This is on County Road one-oh-five. It's about one-tenth of a mile south of County Road two-eighty-eight. County, or excuse me, County Road one-forty-two-eighty-eighth street. So, I put down in the, if you read the briefing form, I kind of put the history of what's going on with this structure. So, we were awarded a grant in '21 of about $517,000 to do this project, because at that time it pegged out about $650,000. By the time we got all the work done on it, went to bid, went to bid with it last year. Came in about $350,000 to $400,000 above, half a million dollars above cost estimates. So, we rejected all the bids. We went back to the state and we reapplied for the difference of that fund to get more grant money. We found out in April that we were denied that request. So, the next step is we're going to terminate this agreement. We're going to basically rescind the money, the $517,000 on this structure, the grant money. And we will reapply for preservation grant in '24, which is due January 2nd of '24, so.
Okay, very good. Any questions by the board?
No.
Jim, Commissioner Schmidt, or Gibbon, excuse me, any questions?
No.
Terry, one quick question. Did they indicate as to why they denied? Is it protocol, procedure?
So, yeah, there were several of them that were applying for more funding. I think maybe about a handful, and none of them got awarded.
Very good. I'd ask for a motion to rescind the agreement, or terminate the agreement.
So moved.
Commissioner Gibbon, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this topic? Seeing none, Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes.
Next item I have is board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for 2023 striping project. Basically, we're doing right around 90 to 95 miles of road, so.
You've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, Sherri.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes.
Next item I have, again, this here is looking for board action for approval to apply for a federal grant. This came out from the bipartisan infrastructure law back in '21. This is some of the discretionary funding that we can apply for directly to the feds. So, we are looking to apply for an action plan grant. This is under the Safe Streets for All grant. So, we have discovered that we need this grant, we need to have an action plan. Basically, it's a safety action plan that we need to have for the county before we can apply for an implementation or a build grant. So, the plan is to get this plan approved, get it done, and then hopefully by '26, '25, 2025, we can apply for a grant for the ethanol plant road, County Road one-forty-three, to do the safety, to do a full reconstruct on that project. That's the plan, so I am looking for permission to go ahead and approve this, so we can apply for this grant.
Cool. You've heard the request, are there any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Come on up. Again, name and address, please.
Yes. Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I was reading over this last night, and I guess I'm always a little leery when we are looking at government grants and what we have to do for those grants and why we're doing them. In your facts and vetting, it says that the county will be 100% responsible for all ineligible product and RSI product costs, including the product cost in excess of $44,601.51 on the county roads. I just, you know, I know that I am naive on this, but do we really need the grant? I saw your budget that you guys put out a couple of weeks ago, that it seems like is this really a benefit to us getting more entangled with the federal government about our roads and other issues? I understand, I'm glad you brought up that we need it before a build grant. I don't know. I just wanted to voice my concern about, once again, getting involved with federal grants and what that will end up costing us as a county and what rights we may lose with this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Sherri, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes.
Last item I have for you, basically is discussion regarding an emergency repair project on forty-two-one-seventy-five-one-fifty-three. This is a bridge structure down at Beloit, crossing the Big Sioux River. So, we had bridge inspections done again this year, and in that, we, and those were done, completed back in May. And some of the pictures he had, we have there the expansion joint on the end of the bridge. Well, in the inspection, we found there's about a six-inch piece that was lifted up of that expansion joint. So, he listed it out in our inspection program, you know, but it'll come out in the final report. Well, about two weeks ago, we went out there, now that six inches has turned into six feet. So, this whole plate is lifting up, and every time vehicles drive over it, it bangs down on it. And it's getting some damage to the bridge deck now because of this. So, we had to go through and we brought in a couple contractors to give us some ideas on a temporary fix for this project and just their availability, when they could come do it. We brought in BX Civil. They had some ideas, but it's going to be at the minimum two months before they get here to do it. And then, we brought in Journey or Sioux Falls Construction. They came in, had some different ideas, and then we opted to go with their idea because they could get somebody in here. They actually started this last Thursday. The cost of this, again, the cost estimate is in there. It's going to be around $60,000 to do this repair. As I spoke before, this is only going to be a temporary. As I have in the briefing form, we will begin the process now of doing a preservation grant application for this structure. And when we do that, we will be replacing both the east side and the west side of this structure, replacing those expansion joints. And then, we'll probably be doing some other minor repairs on that structure as well. So, plan is to have all those, that grant application, ready to go. Again, this is through Bridge Improvement Grant money through the state, big grant money. We'll be applying for that January 2nd of '24 for this project. Any questions about this repair that we're having done?
I was over that bridge last weekend, so, no, two weekends ago.
Did you hear it?
Yeah.
So.
And they've already started the repairs?
Yes, yep.
Is this a typical failure point?
No. But we're, they thought that the problem was is the expansion joint is run out of, the bridge is expanding. It expands and contracts. Well, it run out of room to expand, and then it's popping that joint up, so.
Okay. Commissioner Gibbon, any questions?
No, sounds like it is in dire need of some repair.
Cool. Well, it's just a discussion item, no actions needed. Appreciate staying on top of that, and hopefully it can get repaired and make completely safe very soon. Anything else, Terry, from you?
That's it. Well, I'll have a thing later, but.
You need to exit. All right, very good. Number six has been removed. Number seven, revision to the employee handbook. Tracy, good morning.
Good morning. All right. I brought this to you all to approve the revisions to the employee handbook. As of June 27th, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act will go into effect, and this act has additional protections. So, wanted to update our employee handbook to reflect those new protections in act.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to approve. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes.
All right, my next item is to approve the revision of the accounting technician job description and grade classification. Due to the staffing changes in the auditor's office, we've reevaluated what is necessary for this role and are bringing an updated job description, as well as a request to change it from a one-oh-four to one-oh-five because of the education requirement.
Okay. You've heard the explanation, is there any further questions?
No.
I'd ask for a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience that'd like to speak on this topic? You guys are making it real easy on me today, I appreciate that. Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, we have a temporary alcoholic beverage license amending resolution. Sherri?
So, currently, our resolution twenty-one-oh-seven-dash-twenty states that, within all of it, that the temporary license issued pursuant to this resolution may allow the sale of alcoholic beverages on public property or property owned by a nonprofit corporation during a special event in publicly owned facility. This puts a restraint on some people requesting a temporary license because not all of the events are being held on public property. So, what I would like to do is amend the resolution and remove item number nine so that we don't have to worry about the public property portion of it.
Just remove that requirement?
Yes.
You've heard the explanation and the request, any questions?
Maybe a couple, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, absolutely.
Didn't we originally include this so we could allow, among other things, to allow this to occur at the 4-H facility?
I'm not sure about that, but I know that it doesn't prevent us from having it at the 4-H facility because of this. If we take it out, it wouldn't prevent it.
Commissioner Gibbon, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
No.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the change.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very good, we have a motion, a second. Anybody from the audience like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll ask for Sherri to call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes. Now's the time and place for public comment. If you come up, please give your name and address. I appreciate your time.
Ernest Stropmeyer, 28, 503-474 Avenue, Worthing, South Dakota. I have a question first to start with. Is there any commissioners that have not seen the ordinance that's been submitted? I can't expect so because it was in previous meetings also. And anyway, then now, an ordinance has been submitted by a citizen for a second time with revisions. Planning and zoning has revised and passed the ordinance a second time. We need you as commissioners to help the Lincoln County citizens by voting on this ordinance and getting it in place. This is the job of the commission. Other counties have done the work of writing the ordinance and getting them in place. There are some counties that have put in moratoriums so that they had time to do it. All the people that I have talked to are in favor of getting this ordinance in place. I've had none say that they didn't want it in place. So, if there's anybody that is against it, I have never heard of it. I've never heard anybody else talk of it either. So, on this ordinance, a yes vote would indicate that you, the commissioners, are working for the citizens. A no vote would indicate your work is for something else. Do what's right and pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Gary Schuster, 28, 12 West Stratton Circle, Sioux Falls. Just want to build on what Ernest said, that this ordinance, proposed ordinance, is of course concerning the CO2 pipeline. That's a project which, like any project that the commission looks at, I'm sure you're looking for benefits, the cost benefit ratio, and also hopefully that the burden of any cost is fairly distributed for this project. The cost has increased hazards to the people, residents of Lincoln County. The burden is going to be mostly focused on landowners who are affected by the pipeline. The land will, in many instances, be, the easements will be, will probably be forcibly taken from them, and the values, the compensation that they get, in many instances, won't be, won't be a fair settlement. As Ernest mentioned, the ordinance has been passed. It's something that very much affects the people of Lincoln County. I won't get into the supposed benefits, but I feel like Lincoln County residents will essentially receive no benefits from this pipeline. And in addition to the safety and land value questions, as federal taxpayers, they'll all have to help pay for it. So, again, please take the opportunity to put that ordinance on the agenda and consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Dwayne Skipper from Sioux Falls. Putting aside all the legal questions about the carbon pipeline, it took me about five minutes to question the whole process when I first heard about it. So, I'd just like to make a comment about how practical is this? Ethanol plants have been around for 25 years. And now, all of a sudden, the carbon is a problem and has to be transported. So, how practical is it? What is the pipeline supposed to do? Right now, in Canada, seven, according to the news, seven million hectares are burning, or 27,000 square miles of CO2 and other air pollution. Put all of the smoke stacks from 200 nationwide ethanol plants, which would probably be one or two square miles, inside that 27,000 miles, square miles, of burning trees, and then try to find the ethanol, CO2, produced by corn. That's like finding one ant in an antill of 27,000 ants. The carbon capture equipment itself and the process uses more electricity to run than the CO2 produced by a natural gas-powered electricity plant. What common sense is there in disturbing thousands of miles of good land for a pipeline to carry a tiny fraction of so-called problem emissions? It doesn't take much common sense to see that the whole idea of carbon capture lacks proof of being viable. The other part of this is that there's good land being disturbed. I just had a company come through the easement on my property and put in a fiber optic line. They dug down about a couple feet. They did a good job of trying to return good parts of the grass. Two years later, both my neighbor and my lawn, you can see exactly where they took that dirt out. The lawn in my part is drying out faster. The grass has turned a different color. So, when they say the top couple inches of land, when it's disturbed, it's probably never going to be the same, I believe that. So, I just wanted to pass along how the public, or me, feels about the whole process. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Skipper. Anyone else?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. The first thing I need to do is apologize to the highway superintendent and to you as I, you commissioners, as I picked up the wrong form regarding what I was discussing regarding the grants. I still believe that federal grants I don't like, but I gave you figures that weren't right. And I just want to make sure that the question of getting the pipeline issue, the easements, on record, I have to always state that I do not agree with the pipeline. This could have been stopped and still should be stopped in Lincoln County. We do not need it, we do not want it. And so, that is my opinion. I would like to have you be able to put out very soon, when you're putting it on the schedule, and also, when we're putting on the schedule, the public forum for election integrity. That is, both of these are big issues in this county, and I would like to see very much that we get to the point and we get citizens to be able to talk about both the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Anyone else? Seeing none, I believe there is a request for executive session, and what would that be under, Bill?
I believe it is under contracts.
All right. Going to ask for subsection three, very good. I'd ask for a motion to go in executive session under subsection three.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, could I just make some?
Absolutely.
A report, commissioner report?
Oh, yes, that's the top of the second page. Very good, go ahead.
Real briefly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the auditor for bringing forward the amendment to the alcohol license ordinance. Appreciate that, clarifying that. I want to let her and the public know, I've been working with state's attorney's office as well on bringing some of our alcohol ordinances and licensing procedures in line with state law. And that effort was stimulated by a concerned business, concerned citizen in northern Lincoln County who is affected by some of the nuances in the difference between Lincoln County's ordinance and the state of South Dakota law. So, in the spirit of bringing forward some changes to that, I think here in the next weeks or month, Mr. Chairman, I'll be bringing forward a proposed ordinance that state's attorney's office helped with. So, appreciate the work the auditor did on revising one portion of the ordinance, and there's more coming, so.
Very good. Commissioner Gibbon, any thoughts that you'd like to share?
No, not at this time.
All right, very good. Now, I'll ask for a motion to go in executive session under subsection three.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very good. Sherri, please call the roll.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes. For motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes, if there's no further business, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Sherry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppin?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you, one and all.